DHL. Recording in progress. Awesome. Thank you so much to the Chapel Hill Carboro NAACP for putting this on tonight. And again, those of you who are here already, I'm sure know about the organization. But if you don't, you can find them online ChapelHillCarboroACP.com, NAACP.com. You'll get more information about upcoming events and the work that they're doing to improve our Chapel Hill Carboro community. So thank you so much to all of the candidates for being here tonight. Candidates for Carboro Town Council Barbara Fushy, Jaclyn Gist, Randy Haven O'Donnell, Asia Kelleher, and Daniel Nowell, all here tonight. And the two candidates for Carboro Mayor, Michael Benson and Damon Siles, also here tonight. And just want to remind everyone, just to make sure that we're, that we've got the forum going smoothly with no technical or audio glitches. When you are not speaking, try to have yourself on mute. That goes especially for those of you who are here just watching the forum, but also for the candidates as well, just unmute yourself when it's time for you to speak. And then mute yourself when other folks are speaking. We've got a bunch of questions to get through tonight. We're going to try to get through this whole thing by 8:30. Everyone will get a minute and a half to address each of these individual questions. So 90 seconds. And as I say this, I realize that I think I'm timekeeper on this one. So I'll pull out my online stopwatch and make sure that I've got that running. Hang on one second. All right, we're good. So again, thank you so much for being here tonight and we will jump right into it. First question goes out to all of the candidates. And we'll start with Barbara Fushy. And we'll go, we'll just run alphabetically through this with the town council candidates. And then we'll wrap up with the mayoral candidates, Michael Benson and Damon Siles. Just take 90 seconds, introduce yourself, tell us about yourself. And the opening question, if you are elected to the town council or reelected, as the case may be, what will be your top priorities for the coming four years? Barbara Fushy, take it away.
Thank you, Aaron. So I just want to say I stand on the shoulders of community giants tonight. Community giants and NAACP giants like Senator Valerie Fushy, Judge Joe Braun, Braxton Fushy, and the late Fred Battle, to name a few. It is because of them that I have a seat at the table today. So I am running to keep a seat at the table where policies are developed, votes are taken, and decisions are made. I'm running because representation matters. Mine is a unique lived experience and voice. And we want our local governing and appointed boards to be reflective of the communities that they serve. Community is the way forward. As I continue to do more community building around issues that matter to all of us in the hopes of coming to more equitable and sustainable outcomes. My priorities, some of my priorities, inclusive community engagement. Why? Because we need to hear from all of the community on the issues. The expansion of housing opportunities and choices, because housing is a human right. Housing is infrastructure. And the support of our local business community with special emphasis on the centering of our BIPOC businesses. The spotlight has truly been on our BIPOC businesses. In the town of Carboro, it is long overdue. And we just want our whole business community to have the necessary resources to survive, not only now, but also in post pandemic era, if we ever get there. So again, I am Barbara Fushy, candidate for reelection to the Carboro Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. As I'm, we're starting this forum, I'm realizing we don't really have a timer that's available. So I will, when you've got 30 seconds left, I'll hold this up, which hopefully you can see in reverse. Jackie Gist, you're up next.
I want to thank the NAACP. I'm no longer muted, right? Said I was, but I'm up. Okay. Technical problems this evening. I'm Jaclyn Gist and I'm running for reelection to the Carboro Town Council because I believe in Carboro and I love Carboro. It's where I've built my life and where I continue to build my life. I firmly believe in the values of Carboro that we profess. And I think we need to be living up to our values in a more inclusive, meaningful way. We pride ourselves on being an inclusive community. And yet sometimes we're not very good at it. For one thing, because we are becoming so expensive and we're pushing people out. It's also very important to me that we tell the truth about who and what we are. It's sometimes very easy to sit back and say, oh, aren't we wonderful? We've always been wonderful, but we haven't. And one initiative that I've taken in the past years is telling the truth. And I want to continue us telling the truth. The big thing that I've been, that I have asked for, and I want us to continue to do, is I want us to dig deeply into how zoning, when it first came here in the 70s, impacted the black community. And then I want us to start taking steps, including the creation of an entrepreneur village in order to begin to help recreate wealth in the black community, which was taken away from them when zoning came in the 60s and 70s. So that's one of the major things I hope to accomplish.
Randy Haven O'Donnell.
Yes, well, thank you Chapel Hill Carboro branch of the NAACP, not only for holding this forum, but being so actively engaged in all levels of the community. It's been a sheer pleasure to be a member and to be working with you on the Environmental Advisory Board and being engaged in the conversations about race, justice, and equity in the environment. If elected, I really hope that we can look at two things. First and foremost, racial justice and equity, because everything is predicated on that. And the second that works with that, and it's part of the intersectionality, is addressing climate change, climate mitigation, resiliency. I've had the pleasure of working with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, Equity and Justice Advisory Board. I work across the state. I'm a certified diversity trainer and science educator. And I've worked on developing the Race and Equity Commission for the Town of Carboro and the Community Safety and Law Enforcement. And I'm hoping to continue that work.
Asia Kelleher.
Hi, my name is Asia Kelleher and I'm running for election for the first time for the Town of Carboro Council. This is my first campaign candidacy race ever. A little bit about myself. My family and I relocated from Chicago to here. I'm a mother of a 12-year-old who goes to McDougal Middle School. And I work full-time in the tech industry as a consultant. I got started, yeah, I wanted to run for town council because I started getting involved in local issues in our neighborhood, namely stormwater and things like traffic management and other issues that, for example, my top three priorities. I wanted to get more involved in as town, if I was elected to town council, I wanted to work on three, my three top priorities, which would be providing information that I consider that would be current, clear, easy to access for all constituents, residents of Carboro, and improve on our infrastructure, namely our IT platforms, stormwater management, safer crosswalks as it relates to traffic in our neighborhoods, expanding public transit where needed, bikeways and parking. And my third goal, top priorities, I should say, is tracking progress towards the scorecards and transparent reporting. So if I elected, those are my three priorities. Thank you.
Daniel Nowell.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Danny Nowell. I'm especially grateful to the Chapel Hill Carboro NAACP, a group that has really been foundational to me in sort of my personal political journey and educating me in the sort of comprehensive need and the comprehensive solutions needed to build the kind of solidarity that we're going to need to, to address some of the massive crises and challenges that our society faces, challenges and crises like the national housing shortage, the climate crisis, and then becoming decarbonization goals as outlined by the IPCC. So very, very grateful to our hosts this evening. I'm running because as a young father, I have two children, a three-year-old and a three-month-old. I'm very well aware that I am raising my kids in a wonderful place to do it, in a place that my wife and I have worked really hard to be able to do it. And I'm also very well aware of how difficult it is for young and especially working families. My wife and I have five degrees between us. And we find keeping our perch in Carboro and raising our children the way that we want to here is really, really difficult. And that means it's very difficult for more of our, for more of our neighbors than we can possibly realize. My priorities are to adopt a systematic approach to putting affordable housing at the center of an economic strategy that is economically vibrant and diverse and mixed into our town planning, using that approach to move us closer to carbon neutrality and really organizing from office aggressively to make sure that I stay in touch with the community and people who are not always represented by these discussions.
Michael Benson.
Hi, I'm Michael Benson and I'm running for mayor of Carboro. I am a Chapel Hill, born and raised product of the Chapel Hill School System, graduated Chapel High in 85, which you would see, transferred to Savannah College of Art and Design, got my art degree. I'm an artist and a business person. I have worked my way up from being a dishwasher to a restaurant owner. And it's a very difficult thing, running restaurants. I don't have per se the experience in politics that pretty much everyone in this field does. I'm a newbie, but I'm also an idea, I'm an idealist, idea person. I have a lot of things that I would like to go over with a lot of people, whether I'm elected or not elected. The idea is having a choice and not having a candidate run unopposed on their own and having choices out in the field. And the biggest issue I've got going on right now would be that the library, this is maybe not the most popular stand that I could take, but when the budget keeps going up and up and up and we haven't broken ground, construction costs, I can tell you from opening a restaurant, have doubled and tripled. And we don't know what the budget will be. Our taxes will increase, we reduce parking, we need to support businesses, particularly in the downtown. We need to afford, that money could go to affordable housing and alternative energy. Thank you.
And Damon Sals.
Hey, thanks, Aaron, and thanks to the NAACP for having us here tonight. It's nice to see so many familiar faces, or at least familiar blank screens with names on them. Priorities, first, I do want to mention pandemic response. That has to be a first priority, I think, for all of us. I strongly supported the town council's decisions to put up $1.3 million in local, state, and federal funds to support our emergency housing assistance program in Orange County, as well as more than $300,000 in emergency grants and loans that we put up for local businesses early in the pandemic. As we begin getting funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, that's going to be around $6.8 million coming to Carboro alone. I think that housing security and local business support should continue to be budget priorities for us. A second priority for me is continuing to, or adopting and implementing our Carboro Connects Comprehensive Plan. I have long been advocating for Carboro to have a comprehensive plan. And now that we have our first draft of Carboro Connects, backed up by a lot of community engagement, I'm really excited that we'll have a plan to guide our decision-making over the next two or three decades on things like growth and development and affordable housing and climate change and you name it. Finally, fully implementing our Chapel Hill Transit Short Range Transit Plan. We need to, it's been interrupted by the pandemic, but I think as soon as we can get fully implemented, we're going to be taking our local transit system to the next level. I've been deeply involved in all of those priorities in my time on the council for the last eight years. And I'm ready to lead as mayor on those and other issues. Thanks.
Thank you to the candidates. We'll move ahead to our next question. And we will start with Damon Sals and go in reverse order. So Damon Sals, Michael Benson, and then all of the town council candidates in reverse alphabetical order. Talking about your previous history, how have you supported historically marginalized groups in your community? 90 seconds, beginning with Damon Sals.
90 seconds. Okay, I guess I'll offer a few examples. One of my first accomplishments on the town council was reviving the town's effort to bring up our lowest paid employees to a living wage. That coincided with the start of the Orange County Living Wage Initiative, which you're all familiar with. And I'm really glad the town today remains a certified living wage employer. Second, I mentioned transit earlier. We need to continue implementing our transit plan locally here. I was a member of the policy committee to develop that plan and shape the goals of that project by insisting that we focus on equity for transit-dependent community members. I was also a member of the policy committee for deciding how to spend money from the Orange County Transit Plan here in Chapel Hill Transit. And those priorities have included better nighttime and weekend service, improving access for folks with non-traditional work hours, improving access for folks who really rely on transit every day. We were able to improve, use those funds to improve HS Route Service for the Rogers Road community, J Route Service for late-night service, which serves a huge cross-section of Carboro and Chapel Hill. Finally, I really need to mention that for the past few years, ever since the passage of the Anti-LGBTQ House Bill II, which we all know about, I have been working in coalition with Equality North Carolina and others, and with Mayor Lovell, to help communities across North Carolina adopt comprehensive nondiscrimination ordinances. We've been successful in doing this from places like Hillsborough to Charlotte and others in between. And as a result of that work, we today have more than 2 million North Carolinians covered by local nondiscrimination ordinances that weren't covered a year ago. So I'm really proud of that work as well.
Benson.
And Damon, I appreciate the work you do with that. My, one of my, my children is non-binary and I'm a single father of two teenagers. The, in the past, let's see, when I was living in Washington DC, I was in a neighborhood that was gentrifying quickly. I worked for Martha's Table, teaching photography and art to inner-city kids. I was a board member of the DC Central Kitchen. And we expanded DC Central Kitchen into the organization that it is today, which is a powerhouse with Jose Andres at the helm still. And moving back here, I was pretty alarmed after growing up here and looking at like the North Side Neighborhood in Chapel Hill and the neighborhood that I live in in Carboro, which is Davie Road. Gentrification is, it's pushed out a predominantly black neighborhood. For a little while, it was kind of turning into college kids and now it's turning into more expensive homeowners. And I've noticed that there's been a loss of original neighbors for when I moved here. It's difficult coming up with what, what's the answer to stop that? People have, they're privately driving the market. Again, Barbara Fushy has a lot of experience in this area. And I would, I would direct having Barbara kind of take the point on it with affordable housing, because it's very difficult when it's a private market. And, and trying to figure out, how do you keep artists and people that have lived here for generations? Thanks.
Randy Nowell.
I think one of the, a really formative experience for me in this, in this realm is that I've spent a great deal of time during the COVID-19 pandemic, coordinating a mutual aid fundraiser for Triangle workers who are out of work. I've been the chief fundraiser on a partnership between Mutual Aid Carboro and the North Carolina Triangle Democratic Socialists of America that has raised over $85,000 for people who have been out of work during the pandemic. And we have dispersed that $85,000 in $250 emergency grants to people who speak over 17 languages. And this has been, you know, revelatory for me in a couple of ways. You know, not least reaching people who are, you know, sort of often outside of the processes of regular government aid and a lot of the great work that our town does, seeing some of the gaps that our neighbors are still facing and encountering those things firsthand and trying to work with people who are new to me to address that in sort of a solidarity-minded approach. You know, $250 was for some folks, an emergency prescription, for some folks, emergency groceries. And so we felt really good about that number. And it also helped us to serve a really wide reach of people. You know, I've also been throughout the past couple of years as the leader of the Electoral Working Group for the DSA, reliably showing up to support projects like Weaver's Grove and J Street and projects that I think really move our town equity goals forward as far as housing and transit connectedness. And, you know, I've also tried to be a pretty committed and dedicated fundraiser for the Chapel Hill Carboro NAACP, primarily through the Freedom Fund Banquet, which has taken quite a bit of my efforts for the past two years.
Asia Kelleher.
Hi, I got started locally in our school at McDougal when we found one of our, my daughter's classmates was homeless, living in their van and they had four children. And myself and a colleague or a friend of mine, we got involved with trying to help up to, actually, we ended up with four families we tried to help that were experiencing homelessness right here in Carboro at the McDougal School. And what we found through our efforts, our private, you know, just two women trying to help these families, we soon discovered what Carboro had available to help these families. And in a lot of cases, it was not immediate help. So we ended up housing them ourselves, putting them in hotels and really getting involved with trying to get them help. And as a Korean-American, I've also recently got involved with the Orange County Racial Race Equity Board to try to find out and learn more about our community and how that affects our residents here. Thank you.
Aaron, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Sorry, how have you supported historically marginalized groups in our, in our community? And Randy Haven O'Donnell, you're next.
Okay, um, well, there's several things. I don't know how far back we want to go, but I've got some years to talk about. I was involved with Poor People's Campaign in 1968 as a youth. That's why I'm so excited that the branch has a very strong youth component and dedicates a lot of time and energy to developing youth activism. I was a diversity trainer with the Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools in 1989 with Dr. Forest Toms and Dr. James Banks. We wrote curriculum and content so that faculties and staff would be trained. We trained folks throughout the state. Many of the educators I worked with are in the historically Black Brown BIPOC community in Carboro. They are here today, those who are still with us. After Charlottesville, I wrote a resolution opposing white supremacy. I also encouraged the addition of language for women and religion to the Human Rights Declaration, the UN Human Rights Declaration. I've personally housed folks who needed rapid rehousing. I've worked with about six families to get them into sustained lifelong livable housing. I mentioned my DEQ experience and I'm short of time.
Gist.
Thank you. I'm a social worker by training and by inclination. And I tend to see things through a social worker's lens. My first job out of graduate school was as the first coordinator of the Interfaith Council Shelter. I was also representative Carboro before I was elected as the, as our representative on the founding board for what is now the Home Trust. When I was first elected, early on, one of the early things I did was to introduce Carboro's first LGBTQ rights ordinance. I also worked early on in having our lowest pay grades dropped so that people weren't worked, so that we were at least a decent employer. I was instrumental in stopping the expansion of the landfill into Rogers Road. In fact, I introduced that, I introduced that resolution that then led to the meetings that led to the facilitations. I've had, most recently, after Charlottesville, I was so upset about who we were named after that I formed the Truth Plaque Commission, which wrote the plaque about who we really are and named the SOB, and then has been continuing that, that work. I have, I serve on the Human Services Advisory Board and have for a long time. I'm a social worker. That's how I see things. That, that's my commitment, both as a professional, as an alderman, and as a, as a person. Time's up. I could go on.
And Barbara Fushy.
Yes, and I appreciate the question and everybody's responses. I live in it every day. As I said earlier, mine is a unique voice and lived experience in the community. And I think first and foremost with me is, is just automatically viewing issues through a racial equity lens. I think that that is so important, not only in elected life, but also in community work. I have a very long history of community activism and engagement in the Carboro community, specifically with my, my beloved branch of the NAACP. Held many offices there. I'm a Silver Life member, championed a lot of causes in the community, was instrumental in the development of the Diversity and Inclusion Plan at Owassa, when I served on the Owassa Board of Directors. I also do work with the Orange County Community Remembrance Coalition, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, where I am the basilisk, my brothers, and thank you, Aaron, my brothers and sisters keeper of Orange County Advisory Board. But the key is viewing issues through that racial equity lens. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving ahead to our next question. And we'll start with Jaclyn Gist on this one. Racial profiling is an issue in Carboro. How do you plan to address it? 90 seconds.
I addressed it one way just the other week when we saw the statistics of pullovers and why people were pulled over. And it looked like people were, that more people, more black people were being pulled over for minor things like headlights that, that were out. And so I questioned that. And I certainly have supported the examination of our police practices. We've asked for this report to come, to come regularly. And I know that that's just the start. We also need to be looking not just at pulling cars, but at arrests, at people being stopped and questioned about people going to homes. Carboro is not perfect and I hope we never think we're perfect because then we'll stop trying. But, but we are working on those issues and we're committed to, to addressing them. I've certainly been a strong part of that and can, and plan on continuing to. I, we encourage diversity on our police force, both in terms of race and gender. So I, and we're committed to that. The worst thing that Carboro can do is think that we're perfect when it comes to our police force. And that's why it's important to keep looking at these statistics that, that we have brought to us and questioning them. And just the other week, I was the one that said, hey, what is this? Why is this? What can we do about it? We need to get more training and we need to be watching that closer.
Randy Haven O'Donnell.
Yes, well, in terms of racial profiling, a couple of things come to mind in addition to the work that I've been doing with council. Back in 2014, we, we had a forum with the Carboro Police Department and citizens to talk about some of the issues and address some of the concerns that had to do with profiling. Additionally, at the time, I met with our former police chief and folks from El Centro and the Cell, the Casa for Employment and Leadership, a liaison to that board, in addition to one of the visioners of the cell. And when we met at the time, we talked about what the data looks like. As Jackie just pointed out, the data has not been good. It's improved, but it certainly isn't where we want it to be. My work with the, developing the Community Safety and Law Enforcement, the resolution and the charter for the advisory group is one of the ways that I'm hoping that we get participatory democracy engaged in this issue.
Asia Kelleher.
When it comes to equity, racial equity training, I, I think of making sure or mandating that the police are trained in unconscious bias and non-violent intervention in the community. Similar to others in the town council, like Barbara Fushy, I've experienced, you know, just being biracial. And it's something that's very important to me because I'm very aware of it and experienced it through my, just growing up in Chicago and here as well. Thank you.
And Dana Nowell.
Yes, I appreciate very much some of the incumbents bringing up the statistics that were shared a couple of weeks back, showing the disparity in black driver pullovers. Another thing that came out of those statistics at that town council meeting is many of these pullovers were for registration and equipment issues, not dangerous behavior problems. A very vivid. Um, a very vivid illustration of the concrete problem of profiling, even in an ostensibly progressive community. And I think this is somewhere where Carboro can do a little bit better adopting established models from communities that have done more to address this. We have one point eight million dollars in police patrol and uh, that is about three times what we have in investigations. I think these stops are a good example of the difference between investigation and patrol and community safety. And I would strongly like to see the town start to respond to nine-one-one calls and um, have more community presence from non-armed community first responders. I'd like to see that money come out of police patrol budget and other sources in the budget annually. Um, I think when people call nine-one-one, they want to know that who is coming is going to help them and it's going to be safe. And I think the reality is, as shown by these statistics, um, that's simply not the case for too many people of color in our community. Um, and crucially for this policy, I think it is important to have this administered in a department other than the police department. I think Housing and Community Services is an ideal place to put resources to uh, consider using these more radical community response models, which I think as we've seen across the country, dramatically improve um, you know, violent, decrease violence in police interactions, decrease incarcerations and decrease um, you know, detentions without bail, which are another place that our uh, neighbors of color really are targeted by the system.
Barbara Fushie.
Yeah, so I'm, you know, I'm sitting over here thinking about uh, the history of policing itself um, and who, who the police, you know, were actually formed to protect. Um, and speaking with someone uh, very close to me, uh, we're having a conversation about uh, policing in the community. This is what this person said. Historically, the police were there to collect us and not protect us. Okay, so when I think about how to combat, you know, the issue with racial profiling, I go back to the history. Um, I think a lot uh, has to do with police leadership. Who, who is leading, you know, our, our police department? The diversity of the police force, recruitment and retention of black and brown officers. We want our police force to be reflective of the community they serve. The bias and racial equity training, I'm serious, like on the regular, like clockwork. And the accountability, thank you Erin, the accountability and transparency piece is huge. When we're talking about uh, data and reports. And so, you know, this is how we would hold our police department accountable. I do want to lift up our resolution for next steps in advancing racial equity for community and public safety that was championed by my colleague Damon, Randy and Councilmember Slade. Thank you.
Michael Benson.
Well, this is a difficult question. I'm a white guy. Um, I've uh, I've, I feel like I have not been profiled uh, other than uh, I dress strangely or something. I think the most important thing is uh, having more black leaders, uh, more women in our government and leadership roles, more training for the police, body cameras, foot patrols. Um, I, I, I was, I, our former chief of police in Carboro, uh, was a classmate of mine at Chapel High School. And I, I, you know, Chief Chris is a, is a really nice guy and I'm, I'm looking at what he's doing now with training. And I'm hoping that uh, we go in the, the right direction with the police having this training. I agree with everything that Barbara said, um, Danny's statistics, Randy and Jackie. I, 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 um, I just feel like I'm not the most qualified person to talk about racial profiling as uh, I, I, I can only talk about what I know about, which is training, training, training by the police department and having them go through that training. Thanks.
And Damon Siles.
Uh, thanks Erin. Um, so of course racial profiling is uh, something that cuts across all the domains of, of our community and our local government. Um, I'm reminded that by several years ago, my former council colleague Michelle Johnson and I led an effort to put money into the town budget to send the town's leadership, uh, including the police chief and other department heads, uh, to workshops hosted by the Racial Equity Institute. These trainings are important, we, we all know, because they get us all on the same page, could use the same vocabulary, understanding the history of race and racism and how those forces continue to shape our communities. Um, in the years that came after that, we continued to add money to the town budget to send more town staff to those trainings, including the entire police department and other departments. And our goal all along was to move the town toward being more formally engaged in racial equity work. And it's really flourished since then, you know, in two, twenty eighteen, um, Carboro became a core member of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, which was a unanimous decision by our town council. Um, our town staff have really led um, the way on this. Actually, Anita Jones Mair, I think is in the audience today. Um, she's been leading this initiative and joining other towns and cities in North Carolina to collaborate with each other on this issue. Um, most recently, you'll see that these racial equity goals are infused into every part of our Carboro Connects Comprehensive Plan, which I mentioned earlier. Um, another way, of course, people have mentioned policing, this has flourished in policing. Last year, my colleagues and I made some important policy changes when it comes to policing and racial disparities, covering everything from reporting data, as you've heard, changes in use of force policies and reopening the conversation about school resource officers, which we really need to get into. Um, and my time is up, but um, I want to make a plug for the Community Safety Task Force. You've heard some about tonight and making that happen, and we are currently recruiting for members, so please apply.
Next question, and we'll start with Randy Haven O'Donnell on this one. What are the top two environmental justice concerns specific to Chapel Hill, Carboro and why? Ninety seconds.
Okay, well, I, you know, first and foremost, I think one of the the concerns is, is our coal fire plant. Um, and actually, uh, the town of Carboro last night just um, uh, you know, approved uh, adding ourselves to the biodiversity petition uh, opposing the permitting, continued permitting of the coal fire plant. There are four neighborhoods uh, that are directly uh, and, uh, and have been in peril for decades. That, beyond decades, um, of by the presence of the coal fire plant and the particulate matter releases. Um, Tin Top, North Side, Broad Lloyd, um, and Pine Oles, all four of those neighborhoods, historically black neighborhoods. Um, we know that, you know, what is you is magic wand, that would be one of the first. Um, I think that um, look at um, climate action in general. Uh, for on, um, and doing all of the positive things that we could be doing with uh, green neighborhoods and green building, uh, reducing emissions by expanding on our transportation uh, of um, demand management. Thank you.
And Gist.
This cuts across so many, so many issues. As we all know, it's usually lower income people who are the most negatively impacted by, by environmental, um, by, by environmental hazards. Um, one that's of great concern right now is stormwater. As we can see, the um, the trailer, the, the mobile home community at the bottom of Greensboro Street was very heavily impacted by stormwater. We were able to address that um, very intentionally when we went through the permitting process for South Green. So we, we were very concerned with that, but we still have many other low-income neighborhoods that are downstream. And so coming up with a way, and this is a really hard thing to do, of addressing stormwater in low-income communities at the same time that we expand housing opportunities and we expand density. Um, I think we need to look very, very carefully at that, working with our design community. I also think that access to green space is a huge environmental concern. Access to healthy green space where, where children can run, where old people can, can sit. And so I'm hoping that with the expansion of our parks, that, that we're able to, we're able to do that. So people have access to healthy outdoor environments. Um, but really I think stormwater is, is a huge issue for our lower-income communities.
Barbara Fushie.
Yeah, so um, when I think about climate uh, and environmental justice, um, I'm hearing, you know, a lot, not just in this space, but in other spaces about the impact on black and brown um, communities. And so it is imperative that black and brown are at the table. You know, we're talking about uh, climate. Um, and this is to help ensure equitable and sustainable outcomes. Our voices have to be at the table and in the process when we're talking about climate, climate change mitigation and strategies. Um, I think educating the community on why climate and environmental justice is also important. Folks need to understand why it is important and how they can be a part of the solution. And also it's important to interweave uh, climate justice and environmental justice into things like housing and transportation and other development projects. And I agree uh, with uh, Councilmember Gist about stormwater. Thank you Erin. Um, in the town of Carboro, we do have Stormwater Utility Fund as well as Stormwater Advisory Commission that helps to educate, um, helps with capital projects and other infrastructure improvements as we tackle stormwater issues all across the community. Thank you.
Danny Nowell.
Yes, I think um, when we talk about environmental justice, one of the first things that we need to talk about is car dependency. And what we need to do as a town to meaningfully address this. Car dependency uh, widens almost every equity gap that we have in our society. Owning a car requires a significant amount of capital for people to even be able to. Um, we know that commutes are associated with a whole wide range of negative health outcomes. We know that low-income and communities of color are disproportionately affected by, you know, car pollution, by runoff, by traffic deaths. Um, cars are at, involved in almost every environmental justice concern we have to address as a town. And so I think if we really look at that and we really think seriously about what it would take to not just reduce car dependency throughout town, but to also to spread the radius of the fifteen-minute city that many of our more affluent residents enjoy. You know, a lot of people love living in Carboro for the bikeability, the walkability, the access to green streets. I don't think our neighbors who live off of fifty-four feel that way. I don't think many of our residents feel that way. I don't think many people who live in affordable housing feel that way. I don't feel like, you know, their car dependency is meaningfully addressed for working people uh, in a way that will allow them to save money, to be safer both at home and in their cars, and to enjoy the same convenience and access that the rest of us do. Um, and that, it, that's, that's a major thing that if we can be really systematic about addressing, it will have carry-on effects through almost all of our town planning that I think um, will close a lot of environmental justice gaps that we face.
And Asia Kelleher.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, uh, what are the top two environmental justice concerns specific to the Chapel Hill, Carboro area and why?
Okay, I'm not certain I can say what the top two are, but I can give two examples that come to mind for me. Um, one is, there is a project, um, and I'll make it really quick. There's a project on Pine Hill for affordable housing with PB Homes. So when I look at projects like that, I think about the environmental um, and um, climate change impacts to an area that floods. So we're about to put, the town is about to approve, hopefully approve the affordable housing. And I look at the concerns of when you do the affordable housing, are you doing it in such a way that it's responsible um, for the flooding concerns and not putting people at risk in an area that may not be um, suitable for that type of housing? And the other story I have is a re, I met with a recent resident who is concerned about land that the town owns uh, near the um, cemetery. And my concern is, what's the process going to be for that land? And how does that relate to um, affordable housing and um, on that level? Thank you.
Damon Siles.
Erin, can I ask you to repeat the question? I know you've done this a couple of times.
Yeah, uh, what are the top two environmental justice concerns specific to Chapel Hill, Carboro and why?
Okay, top two environmental, well, maybe I'll just, I'll try to answer it this way. I think, you know, to me, one of the biggest challenges when it comes to environmental justice in Carboro and in the region is that, is making sure that as we adopt, um, implement our plans around um, climate actions, for example, that we are find, we are infusing into the, the plans and the decision-making justice concerns. And I think environmental justice work is like any justice work, means meaningfully engaging communities, especially communities that have historically been marginalized or excluded in the decision-making around the policies that affect them. Um, and you know, I think a great model to look at locally is the work of the Rogers U-Banks Community. After decades of community leadership and advocacy, um, the local governments finally followed the community's lead by closing the landfill. Um, you know, meaningful change continues to happen as the, as we um, try to lift up the work of the Mapping Our Communities Future Initiative that was led by Rena and the folks in the Rogers Road neighborhood. And I think what they've done in that work is identified sort of a holistic set of goals for the, for environmental preservation, for affordable housing, and for community wealth building. All of those have to go together to have environmental justice. It can't just be about saving um, this green space here and not thinking about the impacts on the larger community around housing.
And Michael Benson.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think the first and foremost, as far as environmental is, uh, why are we not doing more solar? And in fact, going after wind. Uh, wind turbines are extremely effective now. Driving down the cost, selling power back to the grid, um, getting, getting people that are having a hard time paying their power bills, applying to a program where we can get their power bills down by using the uh, solar programs and the wind programs. Um, as far as storm runoff, it's a problem that starts in Carboro and ends up in Chapel Hill. Uh, WCHL, I, I think is really aware when Bolin Creek overflows and starts heading towards the mall. There is a, uh, there was a problem a few years ago. Randy was involved with, with a, a danger in cutting down the, the woods uh, in, in Bolin. And that's all, uh, that's all storm control right there. Water seeping into the ground from the current runoff for parking lots, for roofs and erosion control. So I think the, the, those are the two things that I agree with. A lot of previous people said with storm runoff, uh, how it affects people, but I think right now, taking a lot of our energy and a lot of our focus and getting alternative energy resources in there, putting pressure on the university to stop the coal, uh, and also for the town to start using the roof space, southern-facing light should be solar panels. Thanks.
Thank you. Next question. Uh, we'll start with Asia Kelleher and I'm alternating between going alphabetically and reverse alphabetically if you haven't figured that out already, so I'll plan accordingly. But Asia Kelleher, you're up first on this one. Uh, how has your participation in any group, talking volunteering or paid, uh, helped to increase or preserve the supply of safe and stable and accessible affordable housing in our community for people living at or below thirty percent of the area median income? Ninety seconds.
I'm not sure I understand the question. Sorry, I'm a little jet lagged here in Ireland. Say it again.
No worries. Uh, just in general, how is, how have you worked in the past to help promote affordable housing for people living at or below thirty percent of AMI or area median income?
Okay, um, well, I can say myself personally, my experience, um, because I've, like I mentioned, I've never been in office before. As I've gone to the Houses Now March and talked about some of my experience with the four homeless families I was involved with, I wanted to find out more about what programs and what the issues are. And I found out a lot of the issues had to do with um, the vouchers and the subsidies and the stigma around that. Um, it, which is making it a real challenge to find more affordable housing within Carboro, for example. So that's the story that comes to mind um, for me. Thank you.
Uh, Danny Nowell.
Thank you, Erin. Yeah, I, you know, I have been um, pretty involved in community groups with advocacy for a couple of different projects throughout Carboro and Chapel Hill. As I've mentioned before, the Weaver's Grove and the J Street Project that um, are trying to add uh, lower AMI housing. You know, one of the things that, as Asia mentioned, the Houses Now March makes clear is this thirty percent threshold is a difficult one, you know, in terms of establishing it as a town benchmark. And as I have done uh, the work with uh, the housing working groups that I've been involved in, tenant canvassing and, and renter organizing, um, we have really come to understand that that thirty percent uh, threshold affects, you know, so many more people than we think it does. And I mean, not least people living on fixed incomes. If you're living on a fixed income and growing older with Carboro property taxes, you know, thirty percent really gets meaningful very quickly. And so, you, you know, I, I think that this, you know, I've had relatively few official opportunities to push that threshold to thirty percent as a non-incumbent, um, but uh, have been very present in community discussions around this issue. And um, you know, I really think that by integrating this thirty percent stock into the center of our plans and making sure that it is tied to, you know, other AMI ranges, it's put in transit-connected service areas. It's put in transit connected service areas. It's given the opportunity to be rooted next to local community businesses, the same way that often single family houses are. You know, we can, we can expand the presence of the stock in our house pretty, in our town pretty dramatically.
Barbara Fushie.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Erin. So my greatest impact certainly um has been while serving on the town council. Um, I have been a liaison to the Affordable Housing Advisory Commission, Orange County Partnership to End Homelessness. And currently sitting on the Community Home Trust Board. Um, and I'm also constantly in community and conversation with those folks that are doing that boots on the ground work like IFC. CEF empowerment and some other local housing providers. And to know community, you have to be in community. And you have to be in community with the folks that are actually doing this work. So what do we need? Engaging local electeds um about activating policy that would allow for this type of housing. It is truly houses now time. Um, and it's gonna take money. It's gonna take money jurisdiction, jurisdictional funding. Um, subsidy money and also finding uh suitable, suitable land. Um, but at the same time, I think we can also uh meet uh concerns around environmental impact and stormwater runoff. I think, you know, a lot of times things are running in tandem. And so um I, I just think we really need to figure out how to, how to just keep things running in tandem and not tamper anything down or say no. You know, because of certain other issues and thank you.
Jacqueline Gist.
I guess my experience early on in my career, getting to really know people who were unhoused. Um, and getting to understand that everybody who's unhoused is unhoused for a different reason. Um, and then seeing that become more and more of a problem as, as time goes on than, than it was then. Um, led me to my involvement in the early days of the housing corporation. And when I was there, I really pushed for rental properties as well as homeownership. Homeownership's important and it helps build wealth, but it's not for everybody. And it's not for all stages of life. So I, I pushed for the um housing corporation. To, to provide rental and low, low cost rental opportunities for people. Been a strong supporter of CASA. I love that. Um, I want more of that. I'm very closely work with um Club Nova. And was very supportive of their, of their providing low income, single room occupancy, um, or single person. Occupancy for people who are um living with lifetime mental illness. I kind of tend to see things through that lens. Um, and I really believe that I'm real excited about the tiny homes and I'm looking forward to a new concept. Called Pocket Neighborhoods, which I hope we're going to be able to institute throughout the town. I could talk about this for much longer, but I'll stop.
And Randy Havenodell.
Well, uh, with affordable housing, um, there's several ways, I think, to start. The most impact. I've had uh is through the council. Uh, I've been involved with building habitat housing, most recently in April. My shoulders are still. Vibrating from hitting that hammer. Thank you, Damon, for, for letting me partner with you. Uh, I've also worked with uh Dolores Bailey uh over the years, being a very strong proponent of uh empowerment. Uh, CASA, um, working with Karen uh and um. And folks in the community who are, are trying to uh get into housing that's lifelong housing. I think one of the most important things is that. We have the money to uh continue uh funding the uh affordable housing initiatives we have. Um, the, we need to look at expanding and extending that uh half cent sales tax. So that we can continue to fund the, the special revenue fund. We need to also look at, um, you know, Durham has a um municipal building bond. That um they've done a great job of um, you know, being able to create this much larger plan based on um. Uh, affordable affordability. So we, there are things that we can do, but we absolutely need to fund the effort for affordable housing.
Michael Benson.
Well, um, I guess not something that I talk about a lot, but I, I don't own my house. I'm a renter. Uh, I had to apply for rent assistance during the pandemic. I got a grant from Orange County Arts uh to keep the show on the road. Uh, I worked with uh the IFC uh in exchange for food. Uh, again, having a single parent, it was a very difficult period for the last several years. Uh, I went from being a business owner to back to being an artist and uh and doing construction. And earning under 20 grand a year. So it, it's been a kind of a firsthand experience in going through. Uh, making a budget, sticking to a budget, living on a budget. Uh, Carboro is uh very expensive. And you know, to go out, um, relying on going out with friends who said, you know, I'll, I'll pick up a tab. Or I'll, I'll help you out in any way that we can. Um, it's, it's unfortunate to be surrounded by people like that that help out. Uh, you know, one of the nice things if elected mayor, I would have a, I would have decent healthcare. With the, the package that you get with uh the public office uh is quite, uh, is quite nice. So it's a, you know. It's, it's been a difficult time. I'm working on it right now uh with other ventures too. Thanks.
And Damon Siles.
Thanks, Erin. Um, so I was a strong supporter, um, as I may have mentioned earlier, of the town's recently completed initiative to. Uh, dedicate 1.5 cents in our property tax rate increase to entirely to our affordable housing special revenue fund. Now, of course, because of Carboro's small size, using those funds to support housing for folks earning less than 30% of AMI, it's going to require leveraging. That special revenue fund in partnership with other local governments and non, nonprofit housing providers. Um, but so far we have been able to fund creation of new affordable units, maintain existing affordable units. Uh, provide emergency rental assistance and, and other, other initiatives. We've made a big impact with things like the Perry Place project on Merritt Mill where we partnered. With Chapel Hill and Orange County by providing the biggest grant that the town has ever given to any single project ever. Um, to provide affordable housing on Merritt Mill Road. Um, the town has also prioritized grants from our affordable housing fund to support critical home repairs and utility payment assistance and. Other things like, uh, other things that enable residents who are on low and fixed incomes to stay in their homes. Now, since the pandemic started, as I mentioned earlier, we also have been uh dedicating a significant amount of funds to. The countywide emergency housing assistance program. Um, and I'm also a big supporter of the town's partnership with Orange County and Chapel Hill to. Find ways to use a portion of the green track to, to build affordable housing. I think that's an amazing opportunity to especially meet the need at 30% and below, as well as other, other housing needs. Um, thank you. And uh, we'll just say that we also did something on a small scale on that, written that way on Hill Street just last night and very excited about that project.
Next question, uh, we'll start with Danny Nowell and we'll go in reverse alphabetical order this time. Uh, community members living in the Rogers U-Banks neighborhood have set forth principles and guidelines for the development of their community in the area around it. Do you support mixed use development on the 66 acres of the green track? Yes or no? And as you respond, specifically talk about what you do support for that land.
Yes, I do support mixed use development, um, particularly mixed use development that centers affordable housing and uses it as the centerpiece of a mixed economic model. Um, for a car free community that's built around the green space that we're already dedicated to preserving within that plot. Um, you know, the Rogers Road area is one of the most prominent sites of some of our worst ecological and economic racism incidents within this region. Um, and we have three governments between Carboro, Chapel Hill and Orange County. That, you know, ostensibly progressive governments that have ownership here. So this is a tremendous opportunity to my mind. To get this right and to put equity at the start of the development for one of the first times systematically that we developed a piece of land as a town. So I would support housing for 30 to 60% AMI rentals. I would like to see mixed middle ownership opportunities, town homes, duplexes, condos. I would like to see quite a bit of communal green space built around the headwaters of Bolin Creek, which are dedicated to being preserved. And these things are going to be needed, need to be anchored with uh businesses that allow people to spend money, build community. Um, you know, not leave the community too much. And um, and a school, I, I believe is going to be, is going to be a crucial linchpin of that community. And so if we are able to build that systematically, aggressively and imaginatively with equity right at the center of the plan. And then connect it with transit seamlessly to the rest of town. We have an opportunity to do something I think we haven't done before, um, and really put into place an equity based systemic strategy um to really get it right on that land.
Asia Kelleher.
I agree. Hi, I agree a lot with what um Danny has already said, but I would um. I have a few things that um come to mind that are specific to this. So yes, I would support um mixed use development of that um project. But I would, I would want to know more about the commercial side. For example, is it a good opportunity for some of the business incubation we've talked about for minorities, for example? And other things, um, not just the 30% AMI, but also uh the middle housing that we all talk about. Um, and a couple of other things with respect to that space itself, because as Danny had mentioned, and I agree, it is a huge opportunity. And I don't want to see the same uh developer, um, big box retail uh commercial with, with residential that is. Focused on rental instead of homeownership because rental um is one thing and homeownership is another. So um, thank you. That's my comment.
Randy Havenodell.
Yes, um, absolutely. I support the uh green track, uh, the. The plan that the Rogers U-Bank mapping our uh community had developed, I think is an excellent, excellent plan. I think this is something that should have been done yesterday. Um, uh, there's a lot of feet dragging. Um, there doesn't seem to be the political will to stand strong and support um this effort. So mixed use, absolutely. Uh, there is already in the plan, uh, dedicated, protected, sensitive environmental areas. We know what they are. We know how to uh work around them. Uh, we need a varied and diversified housing stock that. Uh, runs the range from workforce housing um to 30% below AMI. Um, low and moderate income. Uh, we can create that range. Um, additionally, I'd like to see the commercial uh be connected with a transit node. Uh, I believe as people already know, I'm very strong for black brown BIPOC, uh, non traditional entrepreneurial enterprise. I see this as an opportunity to boost local economy and to create a, a space for artisans as well. So I, I find that this is something that we need to press and move ahead. We need to stand strong with it. Thank you.
Jacqueline Gist.
My answer is yes, certainly. Um, I think it's a wonderful place for, for mixed use, both for housing and, and for business. I think it would also be a really good place, since we hopefully will have, since we will have. Um, very low and moderate income housing there to start the entrepreneurial village that I've been talking about. That would provide both home rental and ownership um opportunities for people who are trying to get small businesses started. At the same time, providing support that's available within the community to help those small, small businesses learn how to get off the ground. So that I think affordable business space is equally important in our community to affordable, um, to affordable living space. I certainly would love to see more tiny homes there and certainly preserving the, the headwaters. I am very disturbed. By this recent thing that seems to be pitting, taking care of the environment was taking care of people. Was taking care of one is the other. And I know that there are people out there who are trying to use environmental concerns to stop the use of the green track. For commercial and, and housing reasons. And I think that's a divide and conquer um strategy that, that, that we have often seen before. I think we can certainly preserve the environment and provide business and housing opportunities. For a lot of people there. And I'm very worried that there's this false argument going on out, out there.
Barbara Fushie.
Um, thank you, Erin. So to answer the question is yes. The mapping our community's future uh document. Uh, the voices of the Rogers Road community are speaking through this document. And they touch on the very things, you know, that we're talking about, keeping the rural feel, mixed use, affordable housing, connectivity. Preserving uh the sensitive areas as it relates to the environment. And again, you know, we have multiple things running in tandem. You know, we're talking about transit, we're talking about affordable housing, stormwater management, you know, flooding, climate justice, environmental justice. These things are running in tandem again. And I do believe that there is a way for us to not tamper down any of it, but make it. Interweave and all work together for the good. And so, yes, yes, and yes, um, everything that has been mentioned, mixed use, affordable housing, you know, the school. Um, I'm in favor of all that. And I just think we really need to continue, thank you, Erin, continue to use. Mapping our community's future document, the Rogers Road, community voices are speaking through it, use it as a North Star and a guide. Thank you.
Damon Siles.
Um, I'll uh copy the most recent word, yes. I've been a consistent supporter of the broad, the entire broad Rogers Road zoning initiative. We've been engaged in both on the Carboro side and the Chapel Hill side of Rogers Road. That emerged, as you've heard from people, including Barbara from the community led work by Rena. Uh, the Jackson Center and others to develop the mapping our communities future report. You know, as I see it, the three local governments that jointly own the green tract made a commitment to the Rogers Road community. Um, and given the half century of broken promises in that community, I think following through on that commitment is especially important. Um, so yes, I support continuing the partnership with Orange County and the town of Chapel Hill, Antona, Carboro, to plan for affordable housing and other uses. In the, in the broader neighborhood include, at the neighborhood scale envisioned by the mapping our communities future study. Um, including on the green track. And um, I also support identifying other publicly owned land. Um, and evaluating its suitability for affordable housing development, uh, as we did last night on the Hill Street property for PMI. Thank you.
And Michael Benson.
Well, I'm going to say it's a terrible idea. No, I'm kidding. I think that everybody's in agreement. This should go through. I mean, uh, I, to reiterate what uh, what Randy was saying. And, and Jackie, Jackie was, and Randy both brought up two things with supporting the arts and having affordable commercial space. This is a, this is critical, particularly when you get up into the north uh of Carboro and, and Chapel Hill. Um, and finding commercial space and the, the rents, if you're trying to open a small business, you're not a franchise, the rents are really going up and they're against you. Particularly if you're an artist and you want to do something art related. Kudos to Peel Gallery for, for opening in Carboro in a space that was not cheap. It is hard to make it as a small independent business and Carboro has gotten very expensive. We need to support. Uh, the independent small businesses as best as we can. Where, you know, there's a lot of ways to do it. I can go through it later on. It could be a grant system, but. Um, yes, I think what everyone else said, yes, 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 let's make it happen. Um, in full agreement with everyone. Thanks.
All right, next question, starting with Barbara Fushie and going alphabetically this time. Uh, talking about the Chapel Hill, Carboro NAACP here, which works often with the town of Carboro. How do you plan to support the NAACP branch in the work that they do? 90 seconds.
Thank you. So I live in the work every day, um, here in the community. Um, not only. Uh, my work in the boardroom uh with the Carboro Town Council, but out in the community through the various organizations that I talked about earlier. Um, I am steeped uh in this branch uh that I'm a part of. I am a life member. I'm a proud recipient of the 2017 Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Service Award. I was a longtime branch secretary and I'm a current exec committee member and I serve on multiple committees. So I'm deeply committed to the work of the branch. I live in it every day. I breathe it every day. Um, this is who I am. And um, the branch really helps me and supports me to continue to champion the mission of the branch. And also encourage me to bring my authentic self to every space. Thank you.
Jacqueline Gist.
Listen to Barbara.
I think that that's one of the best ways is, is to, to listen to Barbara, which I do. And also to stay connected with the community. I, I live here. I know people. I spend my life here. So simply listening, being open, encouraging people to get more involved in, in the town. It's the community that I live in. So it's not like finding some different other to, 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 to go join and hang out with. This, this is, this is where I live. And I tend to really listen to the leaders in, in the, the leaders in the black community. There are people who I pulled together to work on the truth plaque to learn about how our community really operated in ways that we can move forward to make up for those injustices. So I guess listening to Barbara, listening to, to the community and, and showing up and, and being authentic and being willing to recognize when you're wrong and being willing to tell the truth. I hope to continue working with the NAACP and, and the elders in, in our black community to tell the truth about who and what we are, because that's the only way we're going to move forward. And I think that's something the NAACP has been trying to do for over a hundred years. And it's about time that we were open to hearing the truth because you can't fix anything until you know what the truth is. So I'm continuing with that project. No, I don't want to stop.
Randy Haven O'Donnell.
You know, I, I think one of the most important things about being supportive of the branch in, through my membership is, is that I, I, I found that many of the folks that were members and the community of members and folks that the branch reaches out to were networked with me through my work with the Chapel Hill Carrboro City Schools over the decades. And I was delighted to, to not only know that, but see that on, on some very important level I had a, an underlying tie with folks who have really been active. That said, one of the things in my work with the, with the youth and particularly with the Environmental Justice Committee is to try and weave together the work that has been identified by the branch with the work that we're doing on community climate action in, with the town and also with the, the climate council at the county, at the county level. And also being able to be a supporter and an upliftor within the community and being able to go out into community and listen to the concerns folks have and bring it back to the committees. I also want to make a plug, a shameless plug for the Freedom Fund banquet. Sign up at the NAACP branch website, buy your ticket, attend and be a supporter.
That's what I'm talking about.
Having a hard time unmuting myself. Ajay Kellinger.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you're good.
Okay. Sorry, sorry. One second. I, I lost it for a second.
I had the same issue five seconds ago.
Okay, sorry. Um. I guess I can start by saying how I can support my local NAACP chapter. I, let me think of. What can I think of? I think it's through policy and just being involved, like I am, starting with the community, all the way through policies within the community and trying to be an ally just through action, dialogue and getting involved in projects that would support anti-discrimination, which is something that similar to Barbara, I feel like I experience. I don't know how I could phrase this. I, I can understand discrimination on different levels. And I think the best way I can support the NAACP is through fairness, getting involved, the dialogue and through policy. That I think is the best example I could give. Thank you.
And Danny Nowell.
Yes, this issue is, is really close to my heart. Last year, when I was working on the Freedom Fund banquet during video production, I had the privilege of helping to record our keynote speakers, William Darity and Kristen Mullen, as they discussed the urgency of the issue of reparations and what reparations might look like in the contemporary world. And it's at the risk of sounding banal and kind of, you know, pinning a single sort of Damascus Road moment to this. As Kristen Mullen was talking about her, I believe her grandmother's mother had been enslaved. And watching this production sort of behind the scenes before it went live, I was really struck by the urgent moral necessity of sort of healing this wound that still is an active, living wound for so many people. And, you know, I think that the concept of reparations is a slippery one and it is a difficult one to kind of get on the same page and champion and move forward with. But to my mind, if we want to really like establish equity and treat equity what it really is in this, in this community, you know, workers of color built this town. I'm a musician in a town where a black woman invented the Piedmont Blues. You know, I'm very well aware that personally I benefit in a dollars and cents way from the labor of people of color, of black people before me. And so I really want to adopt a reparations mindset in everything that I do, you know, to basically to expand access for black people and workers of color with every, with every decision that we make. And I think that if you are committed to really a reparative mindset, rather than, you know, simply sort of focusing on shifting benchmarks or, you know, keeping a deep commitment toward that reparations idea is very important to me.
Michael Benson.
Well, first, I would say if anyone that's mayor should listen to Barbara. Be a good listener, particularly, I mean, for me, sometimes shut up and, and just listen. I used to, many, many years ago, I was a documentary photographer with USAID. And I met Dr. John Hope Franklin. We used to go have lunches and I asked him, like, Dr. Franklin, what are some of the things I could do to help? And he said, Mike, you could raise money for the NAACP and for other groups and poverty. And so years ago, when I had a business in Carrboro, we did fundraisers directly with NAACP. I would continue with my new business venture to do fundraising and specifically NAACP. I would love to have Barbara come out and speak and do the things that we can do to raise awareness and raise funding all at the same time. I would say in the last few years, I have not done enough. I, I should be doing more. That's. And Randy and, and everyone else have all said the same thing. Thanks.
And Damon Siles.
Thanks, Aaron. Well, I've been an active member of the branch for several years. I currently serve on the branch's finance committee. A couple of years ago, I served on the branch's Martin Luther King Jr. Service Award Selection Committee. I was also a discussion leader a year or two ago, just before the pandemic for the branch's community book read, which was Henry Louis Cates Jr. Stony the Road, which I highly recommend. The way that the NAACP has been building a progressive fusion politics in North Carolina, especially since the Republicans took over the General Assembly in 2010 has been inspiring to me personally and as an elected official. I think like a lot of people who are here in the forum today. I participated in numerous Moral Monday demonstrations back several years ago and I was arrested as part of the mega Moral Monday demonstration in 2013. But in my role in the town council, I've been there for, to support and advance the priorities and goals of the branch. And one recent example is in 2019, in response to some acts of racial intimidation on the UNC Chapel Hill campus, I introduced a resolution to the town council, which was approved unanimously to join the branch and the Carolina Black Caucus and others to call on the UNC administration to take a bolder action in response to threats by white supremacists on campus and threats to our broader community. So that, so there's just a number of examples to share. I guess I would just say I'll continue to be there for the NAACP, just like I have been over the past several years, just like the NAACP is there for all of us. Thanks.
All right, we got one more question left. Jaclyn Gist, you're first on this and we'll go in reverse alphabetical order. Want to give everyone time to have at least sixty seconds to give a closing statement. So we'll just take sixty seconds on this one. It's a follow up to the previous question and kind of in, in reverse perspective. What do you need from the NAACP as we partner to drive sustainable positive change? Jaclyn Gist, you're up first.
More of, more of the same, I think. Continued communication, letting me know what, what they need. Being open to saying, hey, you got this wrong. Look, look at it this way. That, that's, that's what we really need for a willingness to, to work together. I need help right now in getting out the message that we need more people on, on our advisory boards. And I have a way that I want to do that, which is by getting out lap iPads to people who can participate. So that people don't have to leave their children, older people don't have to get, get down to town hall. People don't have to worry about transportation or meals. I'm really trying to push through a project where we can give iPads to people and get the law changed so that people can serve on our advisory boards and our, our advisory boards and our commissions, just like we're meeting tonight, which is effective. So help me push that through, please.
Barbara Fushie.
Yeah. So the oldest and the boldest, I would just say to, to the branch. The branch is a rainbow coalition of folk. It is by and about black folk and centering black folks and all that we've been through and continue to go through. But certainly there is room for allyship and help. And so I would just say for the NAACP to continue to hold us accountable as, as electeds and maybe some future electeds, depending on how the election goes. But just holding us accountable, I think is key to, you know, continuing to carry the mission of, of the National Association for the Advancement of Color People. Thanks.
Danny Nowell.
Yes, you know, I think I want to echo Barbara. I think the, the biggest gift to, to get as a candidate or an elected official is accountability. And in particular accountability and engaged dialogue. I'm really committed to organizing from office is something I talk about a lot in my campaign. I really think that to address the climate crisis we face, the housing shortage we face, we're going to need to build new structures of solidarity that we don't have. And the way that we need to get there is to, I, you know, I, I feel as a white thirty-two-year-old, first-time candidate to kind of show up as a servant leader and build coalition with the people who've been on the ground doing the work, like the leaders in the NAACP have been. And so, you know, I hope to make myself very available for communication and education. But, you know, I just hope to have an, an open accountable group that will continue to sort of show me where, where I can improve, where I can use a little more imagination and, you know, where I need to listen to those who have come before me a little bit better.
Ajay Kellinger.
I think what I would be looking for, and, and I can echo or understand, agree with what Barbara and Danny just mentioned is to learn more about what they need, what the issues are, to educate new candidates like myself on what the issues are, what's not being done, what could be better. And that would help the community as well as the elected leaders, because we are here to serve and lead. So it's a little of both. Thank you.
And Randy Haven O'Donnell.
This is a great question and I'm going to tell you why. Because with my work with the Race Equity Commission and trying to understand how do we convey to community this concept of trauma? Carrboro is, you know, we kind of live in a bubble in a way. We think it's the best place on the planet. In a lot of ways it is, but it's also unreal because we don't necessarily understand and have out front the, what, what the meaning of trauma is and the race equity issues that are attendant with that. So one of the important things that I would want the branch to help me with is to help with the Race Equity Commission to help Barbara and Anita Jones McNair and I and, and the folks on our team to be the strongest that we can be, because this is an inaugural group. That's number one. Number two. I was just. Okay. Thanks.
It's going to be a mystery forever. Damon Siles.
Thanks, Aaron. I mentioned a moment ago that the work that the branch and the state conference have been doing over the past several years to, to build and lead a progressive multiracial fusion politics for North Carolina. So I would say, first of all, just continue to lead in that way. Continue to lead by example. This work inspires others, including those that are selected to office, to advance the priorities of the NAACP. And as others have said, hold us accountable. And second, in a focused way, related to that is to continue doing the work around leadership development, especially among youth. This has been a big priority for the local branch over the past several years and it's been growing in its, in its reach. And so I think that can be a really important way for the NAACP to continue to make a difference here in Carrboro and Chapel.
And Michael Benson.
Yeah, definitely agree with, with helping with youth. That's kind of a lot of the work I did up in DC. Yeah, I, I think the NAACP could use a bigger megaphone and be louder in their message. More that we could do to help would be great. I love Carrboro, dare I say Cottonboro possibly. And it would be nice to, I think everybody in this group, we all love Carrboro. And if we can, if we can do all the things that we're talking about, it's going to be an amazing two years ahead of us. I hope that I can prod Barbara Fushie possibly into running for mayor in a couple of years. I, I follow you on Twitter and I adore you. And, and I like Damon a lot. Look forward to having a beer with him at some point. And Randy and Jackie and Aja and Danny and it's, 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 it's an honor to be in the group with you guys and having forums in which I can speak what I would like to talk about on some of the issues and listening to what you have to say also. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we've got a couple of minutes left. I want to give every one of the candidates sixty seconds to deliver a closing statement. Randy, this is your opportunity to do point number two from before. Or anything else you want to add that we haven't been able to talk about to, to sum up your message to the NAACP and also to voters in Carrboro as we head into early voting, which by the way, starts on October fourteenth, a couple of weeks from tomorrow. And of course, Election Day, November second, that Tuesday. But I want to start, we started with Barbara Fushie and went alphabetically. So we'll start our closing statements with Damon Siles and go in reverse. Sixty seconds on this.
Thanks, Aaron. Caught me by surprise there. I just say, introduce myself again to folks who I don't know yet. I'm Damon Siles. I've served on the town council since 2013. I have mentioned a number of the priorities that I have in running for mayor this year. Part, partly to continue the great leadership we have had on the town council for many years in Carrboro. But also to really take it to the next level when it comes to advancing a progressive agenda statewide. I've represented Carrboro for several years now in the council and regional bodies and working with elected officials across the region and the state to build a progressive network of local elected officials. That's work that I want to continue to do and to make sure that Carrboro continues to have an outsized place at the table in North Carolina. Thank you.
Benson.
Yeah. And just again, one of the things that drove me to run for, for mayor in Carrboro, Cottonboro is the Delabrey project. I think it's just, it's blossomed out of control financially. That money could be better used elsewhere. Whether it is in affordable housing, supporting local businesses, alternative energy uses. We haven't even talked about the ability of using code sharing with Norfolk Southern, the light rail, which goes directly to Amtrak Durham and Durham Athletic Park. There is just so many things you could do. There's, there's even the ability that North Carolina legislature just passed a bill saying that municipalities can do open container laws in North Carolina. So it'd be a Carrboro issue if we wanted to do something like for the next Carrboro Music Festival or anything else, we could have an open container law. There's a lot of things that could be done at the local level. Something as kind of crazy as an open container law is something that we could vote on and have done. Again, I'm grateful to be in a, a group with all these people. I think everybody's awesome. Cheers.
And Nowell.
I am Danny Nowell. Just to close, for those of you who are late, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be here. I want to leave you guys with the message that if I'm elected, I really pledge to do everything I can to organize from office, like I often talk about, to be as aggressive and imaginative with this office and addressing the crises that we face as I can possibly be. You know, one of the ways we have tried to embody this mentality in my campaign is we are trying to knock on every door in Carboro. And we are going to be working pretty hard through the rest of the next five weeks to make that happen. But I pledge that if I'm elected, that will not be the last time that I that you guys see me in the streets. It will not be the last time you see me around the events and the work that we've been doing together. Because I really think that for Carboro to be the leader town that we know that it is, we have to start from the ground up, repairing some of the equity gaps which are going to sort of prevent us from achieving on our own turf the progressive equity that we need to sort of carry that energy behind bold progressive leaders like Damon and throughout the state and really fill the role that Carboro should be filling in North Carolina. Thanks so much for having me.
Asia Keller.
Hi, thanks. Thanks for having me and hosting this forum. Again, I'm Asia Keller and I'm running for town council. My priorities, as I mentioned earlier, is alignment and accountability, responsible growth and for results. I pledge that if you vote for me and I'm elected, I will work hard for racial equity, affordable housing and all the priorities that I had mentioned earlier in the questions and I will try my best to support. And thank you. Thanks again.
Randy Haven O'Donnell.
Okay, so the point number two was the youth, NAACP youth. I would really like their help in working with the youth advisory board for the town of Carboro. And in addition, with the teen center proposed for the 203 project. I would like to have that forged as tightly as possible. I just want to come around and say that I want to continue, I want to continue in my work and be reelected to face the ongoing challenges and to continue to be the progressive thought leader that folks have known me to be. Racial equity and social justice are the bedrock of a strong, resilient community. And I'm deeply involved in that work to secure the well being of Carboro. Ensuring housing, food and housing and food security and a strong living wage for folks in our community.
Jacqueline Gist.
First, I want to thank you for having us all here this evening. I can't tell you how proud I am to be a part of our community. The work that we've done together and that we'll continue to do together is central to my life. I love our town and I have tried during my term of service. And I think I've been successful in helping to lead and shape the values that have made us the town that we are today. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity to continue with that. I think as we come out of the pandemic, we're in a hinge moment. And hinge moments are times where you can have wonderful change or you can have pretty bad change. And I'm hoping to be a part of the positive change that we can come out of this with as we have new opportunities for how we view each other, how we how we view our economic well being, how we view our transportation. And mainly, I think we learned during the pandemic that we all do a pretty good job of taking care of each other. And I want to help us continue that. So thank you for having us this evening.
And Barbara Fushi.
I'll go quickly. Thanks to my branch. Thanks to you, Aaron. Thanks to all the candidates, everybody that came tonight. I stand on the shoulders of giants, community driven, community focused candidate, accessible and transparent in my service. I bring my authentic self to every space and conversation, leaving no room for doubt who I am and what I stand for. I will continue to be a community builder. This is why you should vote for Barbara Fushi to be reelected to the Carboro Town Council.
And that concludes our candidate forum. Thank you all so much for being with us. Thanks again to all the candidates, Barbara Fushi, Jacqueline Gist, Randy Haven O'Donnell, Asia Keller, her, Danny Nowell, Michael Benson and Damon Siles. Again, early voting starts on October 14th. That is two weeks from tomorrow. Runs through October 30th and then Election Day itself is Tuesday, November 2nd. A reminder, I think everyone here is probably already registered, but just in case you can register and vote on the same day during the early voting period. You can also change your registration if you need to do that. Thanks so much to the Chapel Hill Carboro NAACP for organizing this forum, Nicole Powell especially. She's here. Chapel Hill Carboro NAACP.com is their website for more information on the Chapel Hill Carboro Branch events coming up and how you can get involved if you're not already. Thank you all so much for having me as the moderator. It's been my pleasure and privilege as always. And go vote, everyone. Thank you all so much for being here tonight.
You're the man. Have a good night.
Night, everybody. Thank you all for joining us.
And the transcript, they kept saying Barborough, B A R B O R O. When you read the transcript, that's our new name. We're Barborough. That's
Nice meeting you. Nice. I enjoyed. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.